By the Pledge of Legions.
Good evening. I'd like to quote from a prayer that's attributed to Saint Francis of Assisi, who can probably express in words better than I could, so I'll use that for our prayer for this evening. Lord, make me an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let me bring love. Where there is offense, let me bring pardon. Where there is discord, let me bring union. Where there is error, let me bring truth. Where there is doubt, let me bring faith. Where there is despair, let me bring hope. Where there is darkness, let me bring your light. Where there is sadness, let me bring joy. Oh, Lord, grant that I may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For it is in giving that one receives, it is in self-forgetting that one finds, it is in forgiving that one is forgiven, it is in dying that one awakens to eternal life. May this be your purpose and word to us all today, Lord. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Strom. And good evening, everyone. It is 5:30 April 15, 2024. And we'll call this meeting Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please. Here.
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 Him.
Here.
Here.
Here. We have a quorum. First item of business this evening is approval of the agenda. And I will call on our city administrator for any additions or corrections to the presented agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. Council members, good evening. I am not aware of any changes to the agenda this evening.
And I would entertain a motion approving the agenda as presented. Thanks, Anthony, Scott. All fair to that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign, that motion carries. We have three public hearings this evening. The first is a preliminary cost hearing for public improvement 5373, Shoreview Drive improvements. We'll call on our city engineer, Brian Yvaro. Good evening, Brian.
Good evening, Your Honor and members of this council. I'm going to be requesting, I just want to give you a little bit of background information. This is in regards to public improvement 5373. This is Batumis paving of Shorewood, Shoreview Drive from Pebble Lake Road to East Terminus. I just want to give you a little data. There was one more requesting upon the conclusion of my short presentation that you opened up for preliminary project hearing associated with this project as a portion of it through statute 429 proceedings is going to be special assessed. So I just want to go through the background. Like I mentioned, this is a Batumis street and driveway paving project of a rural section, 24-foot wide road with no curb and gutter. Location Shoreview Drive from Pebble Lake Road to North Terminus, which is the cul-de-sac at the end of this project. As noted in the memo here, today is a preliminary project date of April 15, 2024. The proposed interest rate at this time is at 6.5%, with assessment term of 15 years. Per the preliminary engineering report, the estimated special assessment rates of Batumis Street, five-ton design in amount of $11,750 per unit, and Batumis Drive apron at unit rate of $38 per square yard. So the cost breakdown, a special assess for the Batumis Street portion amounts to $211,500. City has a small share, half unit at $5,875, and also a special assess pit driveway to the owners, a total amount of $20,900, and a small city share driveway apron of 45 square yards amounting to $1,710. And then we also have a deferred special assessment for the street, total of four units in amount of $47,000, for a total estimated project cost of $286,985. And I just want to note on a deferred, just give you a little background, there is a owner located at 1827 Pebble Lake Golf Drive, last name Moline. We did send him a notice. We tried to follow the methodology of a utility development agreement back in 2015. So upon that, we're proposing, there's a total of seven units were proposed with this project. We're proposing that three units be active against Moline and four units being deferred. And this is somewhat consistent, but it's up to the council's discretion if they want to defer all of it or not. Since that property, there is one dwelling, and the property, the access to that is located right off the Golf Course Drive too as well. So some things have changed since then. So to financing, like I mentioned, this is 429, special assess active about $232,400. Some city share, also bonds, about $7,585. And then also deferred, like I just noted, of $47,000. So once again, for total financing of $286,985. So at this time, I'm just requesting, Your Honor, to open up a preliminary project hearing for public improvement 5373.
Thank you, Brian. We will do that this time. Preliminary cost hearing for public improvement 5373 is open. Anyone wishing to speak to this, please do so by coming to the lectern, stating your name. Anybody wishing to speak to this project? Go in once. Bill?
I will say I received a call from a resident impacted by this, and they spoke in favor of it.
Okay.
So that was one comment I had heard that was brought forth to me.
Okay. Yes, please.
Can you explain how the amounts were determined? Is it based on frontage of the road? Or I'm just wondering how our assessed amounts would be determined?
Yeah, Brian, it's by frontage, correct?
We have two ways. We do frontage and then unit. And being a special benefit, we're using unit on this particular project.
Okay.
So yes, it's just consistent with our past policies.
So all the lots along that, all the lots impacted by the project are assessed the same amount?
No, there's different. So one particular residence, all the individual assessment rolls are in the packet. Some residents could be one unit, and then some a combination of one and a half, two units. As I mentioned, with the Moline property there, based on the footage, that's about seven units total of their frontage and everything for the assessment policy. So we're requesting three be active, four being deferred. So they're bearing per units.
On it. Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I have a question. You mentioned Moline.
Ma'am.
Can you go over that again? I'm not understanding what you were talking there. So the backside of his property is not lit up on here. What is that individual being charged for that stretch of property?
Yes, that individual referring to a Moline, when it comes down for the unit basis, it's a total of seven units. But we are proposing three units be active, four being deferred until if they choose to develop more houses on the property instead of just a single dwelling located on it.
Okay, so at this point, is he being charged the same amount as the rest of us?
Per unit rate, $11,750 at three units, correct?
That just indicates who assigned the position.
Is he being charged for three units?
Correct.
Correct.
Or if he develops?
Yeah, if he...
Or more than developed?
If it becomes, if it becomes developed, if he just chooses a subdivide off, then part of that getting a building permit while activating some of those special assessments.
Please.
Good evening, and thank you. My name is Dale Hegland. My wife Jen is with me. We reside at 1729 Shoreview Drive. And I just want to say a big thank you to the city of Fergus Falls for the engineering department for putting the paving district together. And it'll be a nice improvement to access and usability in the future of our neighborhood. Thank you. We support the project.
Thank you, Dale.
Good evening. I'm Bruce Money. I live at 1822 Shoreview Drive. And again, I would like to thank you for looking at this. We have been wanting this for many years. And my wife and I share our favor of it and support this proposition.
Thank you, Dr. Money. Anyone else? All right. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And at this time, we will be back to the council. We'll be looking for a resolution to order the plans and specifications for public improvement 5373.
I will allow for that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Jen. Brent, second. Questions from the council?
I got a question.
Anthony, go ahead.
Obviously, Brian, you said it's like units. So if you kind of like look at, you know, on just the last one, it's like Bowman, and then it says it's two units, and then it says 63, you know, S-Y. I mean, there's a second line after units that says S-Y on a number of them. Could you just explain what S-Y stands for?
Yeah, certainly. That square yard unit, referring to paving, we have the street section. But the square yards is the individual property owner's approach going driveway approach within the redway that we also like to pave too.
Yep. So that's going from the street to their house, as it were, yard, or the link to their driveway?
From the edge of pavement to the redway line.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Any other questions? Roll call, please. Yes.
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 Yes. That resolution is approved. The next public hearing we have this evening is for a tax increment financing redevelopment district located at 801 West Stanton Avenue. And we will call on our community development manager, Clara Beck, to introduce this topic. Good evening, Clara.
Good evening, mayor and council members. This meeting has been a while coming. We've been working on this project behind the scenes for some time now. And tonight, we're going to get to hear possibly from the developers and even from the public about some thoughts and ideas that this project could go. So we have been working with Baker Tilly on a financial analysis for a redevelopment TIF district at 801 West Stanton Avenue. We don't have our Baker Tilly consultant with us tonight, so your experts are going to be Bill and me and Andrew, and we will do our best to guide you through it. We will have more in-depth conversation at our special session on the 24th, which is at 7:00 a.m., which is a Wednesday. But tonight, we're going to just go over some of the high points of the project and then hear from the developer and the community. So this would be a redevelopment district that has a maximum term of 26 years, which is 25 years of collection after the receipt of the first increment. And this would be to facilitate acquisition, demo and site cleanup, improvements, and subsequent new construction of a housing project. In order for the site to have qualified as a redevelopment district, there needs to be more than 50% of the buildings that are substandard on the site and more than 70% of the area occupied by buildings and improvements. We had LHB come up and they did the blight finding on it. We don't have the report on it yet, but we do know that it is a good TIF district. So they were very helpful when they came up and did that work. The proposed development that would be, the outcome of this TIF district would be a 60-unit multifamily housing project with a mix of studio apartments, one, two, and three-bedroom units for an estimated total development cost of $11.5 million, so a pretty large investment in a Long Harbor Riverfront. So the request for TIF is for, again, 26 years. The developer has estimated a taxable value of $6.3 million on the site. TIF projections are assuming a 3% annual market value inflator, which I think is pretty standard nowadays. Total estimated TIF over 26 years then is $3.1 million. 10% of that, which is about $310,000, would be reserved for admin fees for the city. And then that makes the net TIF to the developer 90% of it, so $2.79 million over the life of the district. And Skip and Andrew are here with us tonight. So if you have questions about the development or any other questions about the TIF district, I think any of us would be happy to try to answer those. But that is the information we have high level tonight, and then we will dive more into it following our public hearing on the 24th. So what we're going to do tonight is we're going to open the public hearing, and then we're going to continue that until the 24th. So we're not taking any action this evening. So if you have questions.
Thank you, Clara. Skip and Andrew, would you like to address the council before we open the public hearing?
Sure.
Welcome to Fergus Falls.
Thank you. It's been a while since I've been in this room. I think it's about 2008 when we purchased Cascade Apartments in town here. And we needed to work with the city because there was some boundary line problems. So it's been a while. So I'm glad we're invited to come here tonight and talk to you about this project. Clara did a great job of high level about what the building is. What I wanted to go into a little bit is why do we need a TIF, right? So pre-COVID, back when interest rates were much more palatable, we were doing projects in Alexandria and Glenwood in the 3.5% range, some less than that. Today, we're having a hard time getting 6%. We're having to use some creative financing to get 6%. And that really diminishes our borrowing capacity. We can borrow a lot less. Also through COVID, as everybody knows, inflation went crazy, and especially in the construction industry with materials and labor. And so we've really seen an increase in cost, increase in interest rates. Rents have gone up some, but not nearly enough to offset what that increase in costs are. And that has created a gap. And we happen to be fortunate. There's kind of this perfect time, as many of you know, that the state appropriated some money for a workforce housing program for market rate housing for communities under 30,000 population. And so Fergus Falls fits into that box really nice. That program has had money in the neighborhood of $2 to $4 million a year. It's only been around for about eight years, very small funded. But when the legislature had a whole bunch of money last year, they appropriated $19.5 million for last year and this year. Minnesota Housing made a bunch of changes to the program, never deployed it last year. So they're doing all $39 million now, this year. So go from $2 million to $39 million. It's a lot more money. The program is probably the simplest program that Minnesota Housing has, and it doesn't come with a lot of strings. It's the only market rate program they have. And we have done projects, we built 104 units using it in Thief River Falls. We built 32 units in Glenwood, 36 units in Pelican Rapids, 37 units in Alexandria, 37 units in Long Prairie, 37 units in Roseville, 65 units in Warroad. And we have another award for a project, a second project in Alexandria too, that we have not broke ground on yet. So we've been using this program. We like it. We've done a lot of their affordable housing, which is way more complex, and this is much user-friendly, honestly. The program comes with some requirements. To access their money, you have to have local match. And local match can come from lots of different ways. It can come from donated land. It can come from waiver of building permits. It can come from employer contributions. It can come, and the biggest, most common is from TIF or tax abatement. And it's a two-for-one match. So you get $100,000 of local contributions, you can access $200,000 from the state. And that's how we close the gap. And the TIF that Michael has put together closes that gap and gives us a project that we feel is fundable. We think it's going to be competitive. The word is out about $39 million, and there's a lot of communities submitting applications, so we don't know exactly how it'll be. But we know we've been very successful in the past. The money from the state is a deferred loan, is what they call it, but it's really, in three years, they forgive it. So it's really a grant, but it's three years long. If you take more than $500,000, prevailing wage kicks in for construction costs. So with our project, prevailing wage is built into the construction numbers that we're estimating right now. I, you know, we can't proceed with this project without getting financing from Minnesota Housing Finance. And we can't apply to Minnesota Housing Finance without having a TIF district with you guys. And so it's all related. We want to try to bring a 60-unit housing project to you that we think you'll be proud of along the riverfront. And we hope more wonderful things happen along that riverfront and improve that area. Certainly, cleaning up that site is going to be a big step, and we would like to be a part of it. But we need you to help us to help you. If there's any questions or otherwise, let...
Certainly. Thank you, Skip. I've got a question. Out of those communities you listed, which ones of those provided TIF for you?
All of them. Some of them are TIF and tax abatement.
How long were their TIF running roughly?
So what we've done in communities so that we can be all market rate, we've done nine-year economic TIFs and then 15-year tax abatements. And the tax abatements are negotiated between the school district, the county, and the city. So it's not like a TIF where the city sort of decrees it and the school and county have to accept it. Each one of them is negotiated, but all of them.
And just to clarify, so the, you can have a development TIF, could be nine years. That's why you had on the tax payment. But redevelopment TIF, which this site qualifies for, can get the same market rate housing project, but you can extend it out to 26 years. Is that accurate?
A redevelopment district is a bit unique in that, as Clara said, it requires basically to have a site that you have properties that are in bad disrepair, and it has to be, I believe, 50% of the project site. And a lot of the projects we build are on greenfields, you know, they don't have that. So you could do a housing TIF, but a housing TIF comes with income restrictions. So then you either have to put 20% of the units at 50% area median income or 40% of the units at 60% area median income. I will say Alexandria is the only community that we have a straight-up TIF. They require, they won't do a tax abatement, and they want a percentage of the units to have affordable housing in it. That's just their policy. That's the only one. The rest are TIF and tax abatements. We do have a redevelopment TIF approved down in Brainerd for a project that we're submitting in the same route.
Thanks. Other questions before we open up the public hearing? Thanks, Skip.
You're welcome.
At this time, I'm going to open up the public hearing for a tax increment development district at 801 West Stanton Avenue. Anyone from the public wishing to speak to it at this time, please feel free to step to the lectern.
Hello, mayor. Hello, council. My name is Dwayne Cookman. I live on Stanton Avenue, the 500 block of Stanton Avenue. I'm a bit curious. You talked about riverfront, but the old dairy plant is the riverfront. Does this touch the river? But did you, you say it was riverfront? I thought someone said it was riverfront.
Yeah. You can see the river from it. It's adjacent to a property that's riverfront. Yeah, it's right on the side. It's the 801. It's the former Checker Site, just to be clear.
I know where 801 is. It's like three blocks away. It's the old...
No, I know, you know. Just so the public knows. It's a former Checker's.
It's not adjacent to the river. It's River View.
River View, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne.
Lori Mullin, 2840 Liquid Drive. I'm a little bit confused on which order these things go in. You have Mark Christopherson's piece after this, but I know that we received grant dollars to purchase Marx, and that was through deed, and I think that you guys were notified of that in January. And with that, it says that those grant dollars were to be used for cleanup and for the impact, to help alleviate some of the impact of the power plant closing. But on that grant webpage, it says, "Increase the community's property tax base." And it talks about assist workers on retraining, attract new employees, site readiness plans. And so when I was reading the packet, it looked like the city is purchasing this Marx parcel for $950,000. And then it looked like there was probably $500,000 in cleanup that he's maybe doing. And then in the TIF agreement, it looks like we're selling it to the developer for $300,000. So there's quite an offset here from what the city is actually paying for to what the city is selling it for. According to the grant dollars that we got, it indicated that we're supposed to be trying to increase our tax base. But if we're alleviating our tax base for 26 years, that's working counterproductive to what we were looking at. I know that when we were talking about our strategic plan, and that was November of '22, there was a few council people there at that meeting, and we talked at that meeting that there was no appetite for TIF for housing. And so I guess I want us to go back and revisit that. As we're talking over the last several months, and even on the agenda tonight, we're having the attorney draft an agreement for the franchise fees. So we're raising people's property tax and franchise fees and other costs, and yet we're taking away $3.1 million from the public in tax base over the next 26 years. So I think we need to go back and have a work session on this.
Thanks, Lori. Anyone else wish to speak to this?
Hello, I'm Jeff Ackerson, local representative here, I guess, from Vector Windows as a part-owner of the company and the CEO. And so I guess when I hear there's no appetite for using TIF for housing, I guess I want to make sure to say I have an appetite for that. We are in dire need of employees. A lot of businesses in town are. Workforce housing is a major concern for Fergus Falls. TIF is a very standard thing to be used for that. And we are not taking away $3.1 million from this community because this hasn't been developed yet. The $3.1 million is only if it gets developed. So this tax increment financing is there to allow development to take place, very standard and very much in support. And this community needs to continue developing workforce housing or as businesses, you are going to lose more of a tax base by businesses leaving this community or growing and expanding in other communities than what you will of giving up a little bit of incremental tax, not the tax that's currently being paid today. All you're doing is saying that, let this development go through, and the incremental tax will wait for 26 years to collect that tax. We think in terms of 100 years or more. If our council is only thinking of the next five to 10 years, I'm sorry, we are not going to be growing as a community. So we need to be looking at future developments and again, looking for that future tax base when it comes. But that means you have to have the development happen. You're not going to have developers come in here when you have a district that has blight and everything else on it. We have to, as a community, make investments in this community. So I'm very much in support of using TIF to allow this development to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Anyone else wishing to speak to this this evening?
Someone else says, I'm going to have one more comment here. Thanks, Jeff. I agree that we need housing. That's not the issue. It's how we're funding it. And the developers are also going after the 39% with workforce housing. So they're getting a substantial amount of funding that wouldn't be there in other years.
Thanks, Lori. Anyone else?
Good evening, Your Honor, Council, City Staff. Michael Olson, I'm the Executive Director for the Fergus Falls HRA. And I just wanted to start tonight by thanking Skip and Andrew for, for attending the meeting and maybe make a comment quick on, on how much work goes into the process and getting kind of to the point where they're at here to develop site plans and, and develop building plans and work on applications. Minnesota Housing is, is not an easy source of funding for projects. And Skip has a history of developing successful applications and has a portfolio of successful projects. I think we should be very happy as a community to see him sitting here, working on a project for us. And so I just wanted to, to stand up tonight, thank Skip for, for the effort that he's put into this. Thank the Mayor and the Council and staff for the work that they've done on the project. And I hope we're lucky enough to, to see this through. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Anyone else wishing to... Lisa?
Good evening. I'm Lisa Workman, the President of the Fergus Falls Area Chamber of Commerce. Our employers, our local businesses, their, their number one struggle is workforce. If we have an opportunity for 60 units from studio to three-bedroom, those are employees. Those are families that can move to our community. If we don't have housing available, they can't move here. The, the population that we have here in Fergus Falls and Ottertail County isn't enough to fill the job openings that we have. So housing, we are all for it. And it's certainly going to help our business community and then some. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Anyone else?
Debbie Smith, 1009 Circle Lane, Fergus Falls, Minnesota. I am just curious, because I don't know, was this ever opened up for bids to anybody else? That's my first question. The second question is, if you're getting a grant or anything from the state, are there strings attached that we should know about? Thank you.
Thanks, Debbie. Yeah, yeah, Andrew can answer, and then Skip, you can answer.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, Council members. The city doesn't currently own the site in question. That is the next topic on the agenda, which is why we're delaying action on the TIF this evening, to make sure the sequential order makes sense. The developer has submitted a letter of intent, which was included in the council's packet this evening. So if anybody's interested in that, it's on the city's website. There's nothing that would prohibit somebody else from entering or submitting a letter of intent to the city as well. And then the city council would have multiple letters of intent to potentially consider. But we do not have the ability to open this up for opportunities at this point in time because we do not own the property or have site control over the property. We're just getting things prepared, knowing that we've been working in good faith with the property owner and have the resources, most of the resources identified and secured to make that purchase when the site is cleaned up.
Thanks, Andrew. Yeah, and nobody knows workforce, Minnesota workforce housing, workforce development program better news, Skip. So are there any strings attached that we're not aware of?
No, they're not. As I said, basically, you build a building, you facilitate occupancy, you fill it, they forgive the loan, and they never talk to you again. It's, it's the simplest program they have by far. Everything else, they talk to you for 50 years.
And it's a recently new program that's designed specifically for workforce housing in outstate Minnesota. Is that accurate?
Correct. None of the nine-county metro is available for funding for any community over 30,000 population. So thank goodness the Duluth, the Rochester's, and Mankato's can't apply.
And this is exactly what it's for, workforce housing for communities that need it, that their employers need it. And so, yeah, I would just echo the comments. Thanks for being here, Skip and Andrew. And thanks for your willingness to invest in our community. Hopefully we can continue to see this project go forward. At this time, yes, please.
It's really hard to hear you.
I don't know, is my mic on? I'll, I'll try to talk into the mic, sorry. All right. It's the first time anyone's, never mind. With, with that, I'm going to, I'm going to close the public hearing.
No, Your Honor, we're going to continue the public hearing to Wednesday, April 24th.
We'll suspend it. We'll suspend it. We'll close it for, we're going to, we'll reopen it on the 24th. We'll suspend it, whatever. But for tonight, we're going to move on. Thank you, Skip. Thank you, Andrew.
Your Honor, do we get the opportunity to ask a question or not?
Sure.
I, I think, Skip, the only probably, the question I have at the moment would be, what happens if, if, is the fund allocation either all or nothing? I mean, if you're applying to the state for simple, simplistically kind of $4 million, and they, will they come back and say, you know, because as you say, there's $39 million in the pot, the entire state is flooding them with applications, you know, will they, will they allocate something to all projects? Or will it be that you're not successful and therefore you get zero? I mean, to the best of you, I, I can't hold you to it because obviously you don't...
I don't know for sure. But I, I do know, you know, that's a very common practice with deed. Just like you applied for $950,000 and they gave you $650,000. They're very common to cut them. I think Minnesota Housing looks at it a little bit different in that they know you need all your sources or the project doesn't move forward. And I've not seen that they've done that. I did on one round have they reduced it, but then they gave it back to us anyways. There was some clarification in some of our numbers. But typically, you get what you request.
Right. Yeah. Because as you say, if you, if you ask for $4 million, they give you two, now you've got to find $2 million.
Yeah, the project doesn't move forward.
From somewhere. So they don't go for one. Right.
And, you know, they're, in their eyes, they want to please the legislature. Legislature wants them to spend the money, build housing. So if housing doesn't get built and it doesn't get spent, they're not doing their job. So I, I've not seen it. We've been working with Minnesota Housing Finance for about 38 years. And they usually are, this is what it needs, or not at all.
Yeah. And maybe you can probably just go over the abbreviated timeline that obviously the application's got to be in by X date and...
Yep. April 30th, so we're, last couple of weeks. Their award date is the latter part of August of this year. So it's a pretty quick turnaround. Their calendar says, like, maybe August, Minnesota Housing Board meeting. I'm a little concerned that they potentially could push that out a month if they do get a real lot of applications. But anyways, it'll be fairly soon. And that would be a really good timeline then. If, if awarded, we can go to working drawings, do survey work, soil borings, get the project bid out over the course of the winter, and be ready to break ground when road restrictions come off in the spring. So our, our goal would be to be awarded in August, break ground in May-June of '25. And this would be a 13-month construction project.
Thanks, Skip.
You're welcome.
Ben? I just had a question for you. Also, one more question. How did you hear about that property becoming available? I'm just kind of curious.
Mr. Mayor called me.
Okay.
I think it was between Christmas and New Year's. And he's like, I heard about this program. We need this housing in our community. And we started working on it right before the New Year.
Okay. I'm just curious.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. I, I often, I more than not do get calls from communities for housing. Not that we strategically look for somebody. We usually get called to, to try to help out. And sometimes it's an employer that calls.
Sure.
Done a lot of work with Marvin Windows, Polaris Industries, Digiki up in northwest Minnesota.
Those are great companies.
They're good companies. And, yeah, they've, they've been good to work with. And they've helped us get funding and build them housing and help get them employees.
Thank you. And just to be clear, so we've talked to Minnesota Housing Finance, and they will talk to you about developers that have successfully completed this program. And nobody's completed more projects successfully than Skip around the, around the state. And it was very clear when we talked to Skip and Andrew, and, you know, any developer, we're welcome any developer in this community. But we certainly will welcome one that has the track record that D.W. Jones has of, of getting these projects done. So just to make it clear, we didn't exclude any developers from the conversation. We just told them about the opportunity that we had. And based on their track record, we thought it would be a good fit for the community. So 100%, that's what happened.
And when we started the conversation, we were a short timeline to start basically in January and have something ready by the end of April with having to do a TIF, design a site, do all, everything we need to do to get an application in. It was really tight.
Yeah, Scott? On the TIF timeframe of 26 years, do we have any flexibility with that through the, you know, as this gets negotiated out and everything? Is there any opportunity to make that some other timeframe? I mean, could it be 15 years? Could it be some other number besides 26? Or is that, we either do that or we don't do it? That's my question.
Clara, Skip, do you want to guys, I know we've talked to Michaela about this at length. They've studied those numbers closely.
Yeah, I'll just get up to the microphone. Yeah, we have talked a lot about the timeline and if there is any way to shave it off. And at this point, I think our, our smartest option is to go for that full TIF, for the full 26 years. There may be an option for some flexibility, but if there is, it's very small. So I think we want to set ourselves up for success with the most amount of time possible. So I don't know if you want to talk about any of the numbers at all, but that's, that's the discussion that we've had with Baker Tilly. And, and I feel pretty confident in where we're sitting with that.
Just a side note with that. And Clara, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's kind of like when we worked with the mill. You set up the TIF district, and you can, you can set that up for the statutory length of that. And then when you get the development agreement, then, let's say the numbers get refined and it could be something shorter, then you can do that in the development agreement. But if you don't set it in the TIF plan, then you, you can't ever, you can't, you can go down, but you can't go up above it. So like, if you set the TIF plan at 15 years, but, oh, I really needed 17, you couldn't do that. But if you set it at 26 years and, oh, I need 17, then you could go down to 17. Would that be a correct, Skip, understanding?
That would be correct. And the other thing is, in the development plan, it's years or dollar amount, whichever comes first.
Yep.
So if taxes were increased, and we were paying more taxes every year, it potentially could be decedentified.
Paid off sooner.
Before the 26 years too. So it's whichever comes first.
And we've had that in past TIF districts where, yeah, they've been set up, Aura being a good example of that. We had that TIF district, they paid off, you know, faster than anticipated. We ended the district back on the tax roll sooner than anticipated. So...
Thanks, Bill. All right. So anything else from the council? We're going to move along to the next public hearing. Thank you, Skip. Thank you, Andrew. Thanks, Clara. Yeah, the next item is a public hearing for a business subsidy loan for Mark and Brendan Christopherson related to the same property, 801 West Stanton. And we'll call on our community development manager, Clara Beck.
Thank you. Yes. As part of all of the pieces that need to come into place for this workforce housing project to come to fruition, the seller of the site is looking for a loan from the city of Fergus Falls. Due to the size of the loan and the interest rate, which is well below market at 3.09%, we do have to hold a public hearing on that before we can move ahead with any kind of discussion about offering the loan. So that's what we are doing here this evening. And I can take any questions anyone has.
Thanks, Clara.
I have a question.
Yeah. And I'm just going to, just real quick, because it was brought up at the last public hearing too, this $500,000 and the cleanup costs. So the purchase agreement for the site is $950,000. The grant from the state is $650,000. The purchase price of the property is $300,000. That's, those are the numbers that make this project work. The 500 is within that $950,000. 500 is a loan to the current owner to clean up the property before the city takes, cont title of the property. Just to clarify that. So it's not, that 500 is not outside of the 950. It's all within that.
And in addition to that, just so we're clear, at the time of closing, when we purchased that, the city is the person, or the entity that gets paid back first. So we, in that transaction, it's kind of like when you do a closing, you go and pay a mortgage off, paying off that city loan first. That city loan for cash flow purposes, for, for getting that going. So...
Thank you.
Yep.
Bill. And I think, do you have a question or comment?
Yeah. It was that in, in our closed meeting, we talked about the interest rate being 5% as opposed to 3.09. And in the purchase agreement, it's kind of showing 5%. But in all the other documents pertaining to this, it's, it's saying 3.09. So I, you know, are we 5% or are we 3.09?
3.09.
3.09.
So...
Should we clarify that?
Yep. So that, that is obviously well below market rate. And, and I, I thought, and I thought we were, you know, verbally, we were all in agreement that 5% was, was the rate. So I think that's one point. And then the other piece would be, obviously, there's quite a few liens against this property. How, how does the, kind of the transition from us giving them kind of obviously the loan and then kind of the liens being taken off that are in front of us? You know, if you just want to go through the mechanics of that role, that'd be great.
The loan proceeds, part of it will be used to pay off those liens. So they're securing the city's first position. We will be a first position.
Can't hear you.
The city will be in first position when it enters into this loan. And being in the first position, those liens will be paid off together with the mortgage that's currently on there. And so the, the position for the city will be first priority. And when we close with the larger purchase of $950,000, the city will get, get paid first. And then that loan will get satisfied.
Do we have any negotiation on the interest rate?
I can always bring, bring it back. This is what was brought to me.
Yep.
So if you want to say no deal for 5%, we certainly can do that.
Wasn't it, and we point out, we did go to them with 5%. So we did go with your instruction of 5%. Their attorney countered back with 3.09.
All right. So are we ready to, should we open up the public hearing? And we'll bring it back to the council. We have further discussion. So at this time, we're going to open up the public hearing for the business subsidy loan to Mark and Brendan Christopherson associated with the property located at 801 West Stanton. Anyone wishing to speak to this, please step to the lectern.
Mark Leighton, Fergus Falls. I have no heartburn with the sale to Mark Christopherson. I have no heartburn with the developer. I'm not so sure I can bring up budget. But I remember Councilman Rachel's trying to find $7,500 for a lawsuit. We now just assess some property owners, 200 and some thousand bucks on, on a road. And now we're going to give away a million and, a million two, million three in tax income and financing. Looking down the road, we have operating costs on new projects that we are currently developing. Convention Center is already built, and that's going backwards. The Aqua Center budget hasn't been reviewed. What are those operating costs deficits? DeLagoon, what are those operating cost deficits? We have a major infrastructure issue in the city of Fergus Falls, water sewer storm. I think there's a, a amount of money that's spent on a roundabout by the YMCA. So I carefully ask again, this council, the administration, and the finance director, where is this money going to come from? No one's accumulated all these projects to the cost of the consumer. Again, I have no heartburn with the sale and the purchase. I have no heartburn with the developer. I congratulate them. I'm here to protect the city taxpayer. I believe a three to five-year projection on these costs should be developed before I believe a three to five year projection on these costs should be developed before this is discussed or approved tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leighton. Anyone else wishing to speak? To this subject? The business subsidy loan? See, no one. Hearing is closed, it's back to the council. At this time, we'll entertain a resolution approving that business subsidy loan in the amount of $500,000 to Brenda and Mark Christopherson for the property located 801 West Stanton Avenue. Anthony, did you want to make a?
I, I would make the, the resolution or?
Make a resolution and then you can, or?
I'd make a resolution that we'd do it, but at 5% interest.
There's a resolution at, approving that loan at 5% interest? Someone like to second that?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Laura, questions? Comments from the council? Mr. Graeme?
Just a question, is there, is there any safeguards that are built into this agreement? If there was a issue with the owner, or, you know?
Life insurance?
Since I'm, since I'm kind of in that business?
Life insurance?
If there was a death?
Yeah.
Yep, there is, there will be a life insurance.
Okay.
Life insurance requirement?
And, well, and the mortgage too.
Yep.
And a guarantee, personal guarantee.
Okay.
Before?
Scott.
Is it second? Somebody?
Yeah, we're good. Yep.
If we go back, you know, we've been working on this thing for quite a while, and is that going to stop this if, if we go back to the lawyer and, and they, Mark wants the 3.09, are we going to hammer back and forth? How is that going to work? I just, you know, it's been doing this for two weeks and finally kind of come to that agreement of that no, 3.09, it's the lowest I think we can charge for the six months or eight months or whatever it's going to be. So I just don't know what, what's going to happen if it goes, we approve it and they don't want that three point, or that 5%, what, then what? What's our, what's our next step?
Well, there's a resolution at 5%.
I just, I was like, that's fine, I'm just going to ask, I was just asking.
Yeah. I, I don't really answer that question, Scott.
It would have to come back for further council review and approval.
I think we worked it out the other day that it's less than $1,200.
I think, I think.
So I think if, if Mark Christopherson wishes to lose $950,000 for the sake of 1,200 to $1,300, then, then he doesn't deserve the 950.
Other questions before we call for the roll? Roll call, please. Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. On the same property, 801 West Stanton, we would look for a resolution authorizing the city to enter into a purchase agreement with Mark and Brenda Christopherson. Thank you, Scott. Brent, thank you. Questions? Roll call.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Thank you. There are no bids to award this evening under petitions and communications. We have two proclamations to read. First one being proclaiming April 25th as Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed and with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and throughout the world. And whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable source, pardon me, resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. Whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of our businesses, and beautify our community. And lastly, where trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Benjamin Shire, Mayor of the City of Fergus Falls, do hereby proclaim the 15th day of April 2024 as Arbor Day in the city of Fergus Falls. And I'd like to thank Guy Taylor and the Public Works Department and all the people working on the trees, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but we are the first Tree City USA and the longest in the nation.
First in Minnesota, I know that for sure.
We are tonight, that's for sure.
Thanks to Andy.
Yeah, seriously, thanks to all your staff for, for the wonderful job you do. Secondly, we have a proclamation declaring, recognizing Small Business Week between April 28th and May 4th. This has been prepared by our president of our local Chamber of Commerce, Lisa Workman, and we thank her for that. Whereas small businesses are the backbone of our local economy, contributing to the vibrancy and resilience of our community. Whereas small businesses play a crucial role in providing employment opportunities, fostering innovation, and driving economic growth within the city of Fergus Falls. Whereas the entrepreneurial spirit and dedication of small businesses, owners and owners enhance the unique character and identity of our city. Whereas Small Business Week provides an opportunity to celebrate and honor the contributions of small businesses and the individuals who work tirelessly to make them successful. Small Business Week, we recognize the importance of supporting and patronizing local small businesses which are integral to the fabric of our community. And by promoting awareness and appreciation for small businesses, we encourage economic development and prosperity for all of the residents of Fergus Falls. Now therefore, I, Benjamin Shire, the mayor of the city of Fergus Falls, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim the week of April 28th through Saturday, May 4th, as Small Business Week in the city of Fergus Falls, and I call upon the residents to join me in recognizing the vital role that small businesses play in our community and support them through our patronage, patronage and encouragement. Thank you. Thank you, Lisa. Thanks to all the small business owners and employees out there, truly are the backbone of the community. All right. And with that, we'll call on our public library director, Gail Headstrom, to give us our annual library report. Good evening, Gail.
Thank you, Mayor Ben, members of the council, and members of the community of Fergus Falls. Thank you for allowing me time to share a little bit of information about the library's annual report. And just for clarity, the annual report is based on data from last year. And in the state of Minnesota, every public library is required to file an annual report with the state. You will find the preceding seven years of annual reports available online for all public libraries on the Minnesota Department of Education webpage under Library Services. These, of course, will not be there yet, it's a little early in the process. But a couple of highlights regarding the statistics I want to share with you can be found on a bookmark, and I do have additional ones for the public, if anyone would like one, I can leave some behind. But last year, 194,000 items were circulated in the library, physical items, and additional 28,000 were circulated digitally with our online collections. We have 13,506 registered users, and our service area is, has a population of about 19,000 people. That service area is determined by the population of the city plus a specific distance outside of the city limits. And I, I cannot tell you the exact number, but I will tell you, it's less than 10 miles, but greater than three, somewhere in there. So just how we determine what our user group is really considered. Of course, we know no boundaries, and we will serve anyone. And in the state of Minnesota, if you have a library card at one library, it is good at another. They can register that card and you can use those libraries anywhere. So we like to be able, to be a library to everyone who stops by, and many people do stop by because there's a lot of really great things happening in the community. So people may be traveling, they may be camping at one of our campgrounds, they may be here for medical treatment, but we can serve them at our public library and welcome them to the community. We have more than 20 community volunteers at our public library, and I just want to let you know how many hours those volunteers put in last year. And it was 2,006 hours of volunteer service at the public library. There's a staff of seven full-time employees, 13 library aides. Every summer, we hire tutors, and then we have these wonderful 20 volunteers who are actually scheduled each week. Another number that's not on the bookmark that I shared with you, but that I think is really significant, is the number of non-library sponsored events that took place at the library. So these are people who are using our study rooms and the community room, who called in advance to reserve that space. It's used 1,232 times those spaces were. That doesn't count the people who came in, noticed an empty space and went to use it. That's just people who, who actually called ahead. Pretty impressive. That space is well utilized. And, and we hear all of the time from the public how much they appreciate it, and people visiting really comment on what a gem it is for our community, and, and most people are really envious of it. Couple of other things I just want to mention, obviously, numbers tell one part of the story, but equally important, if not more important, is, is patron satisfaction. So we want to know that when people come to the library, they're getting the information they came for. We want to know that their information finding experiences are successful and that we're serving them to the best of our ability. And we do believe that for the most part, our patrons do seem satisfied and will keep striving to make sure that happens. Do you have any questions about the annual report that I could ask, or that I could answer? Sorry.
No, thank you, Gail.
Okay.
This is great information. Council, any questions for Gail? Just thank you to your staff for all that you do. I, I love to brag about the Fergus Falls Public Library, which is the best library in the state of Minnesota. There's no doubt about that.
Thank you. It's a, it's a wonderful place to work and be, and I just, I want to mention a couple more things since I have the microphone. If you don't mind, you'll never get me out of here. Um, so, right now, the library staff, we've been doing a lot of working on improving the user experience, so we've been doing a lot of inventories, reclassifying collections, and it's really a lot of tedious work, and we all seem to really thrive in that kind of work. So you'll notice some changes coming forward. They're very subtle, but we think that they're going to make everyone's experiences more successful in finding information. I also want to point out that I enclosed a purple calendar for people in your handouts, I believe, and if anybody else wants one, I'll provide that. But the number of programs that we have coming up at the library is really impressive. I just attended an, an event on Saturday that was phenomenal. We are going to be exhibiting the Testify exhibit, which is an incredibly powerful and important exhibit for people to see. This was actually put together by Diane and Alan Page, and you may know Alan Page, he's a Minnesota Supreme Court Justice or a Minnesota Vikings. But it's a really powerful exhibit, and there'll be some additional activities that go along with that. Our seed garden is open up, if you're looking to plant things. Summer reading is just around the corner. Our very successful tutoring program will start, we're already receiving calls of people wanting to sign up. You are one of the first to know that the Lowe collection is in place, and we've talked about Warren and Jeanette Lowe leaving money to the library's foundation and us establishing a very specific collection to honor their memory. And I think you'll be excited to see what's, what's, what's in store with the collection and some other special events. The Friends of the Library will be having their annual meeting on the 23rd. I encourage you to attend, it's free, you don't need to be a member, just show up, learn a little bit more about the library. Ariel McCune will be speaking there about her experience working in the American Library in Paris. Speaking of Ariel McCune, she was recently awarded by the United, Women United, which is part of the United Way, they raise money for the Imagination Library, as the literacy champion of the year, and it is a very well-deserved honor. Ariel McCune goes above and beyond to serve young people in our community, doing outreach to the YMCA, to elementary schools, to the high school. She will be taking a bus of teenagers to a conference in the cities. She is the real deal and really dedicated to serving people and connects well with, with our young people. So if you see Ariel, I encourage you to comment or congratulate her on that honor and the work that she does. So thank you.
Thank you, Gail. All right, moving along to the consent agenda tonight, there are seven items for consideration. Anyone like to speak to any of those issues separately? We can remove them at this time, otherwise I would look for a resolution approving the consent agenda as presented. Thank you. Brent, Al, second?
Actually, I was going to try to talk about number seven, but that's okay.
Sure. No, no, we'll pull it off. Then you'll, but you'll make a second on the resolution to approve the other six, right?
Sure.
All right. Roll call on those six, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. And number seven is a resolution accepting, seven, you said, right?
Seven, yes.
Yep. Resolution accepting local road improvement program grant offer for the public improvement 5362, which is the Fern Freiberg Roundabout. Did you have a question?
I guess, yeah, I do. Actually, you know, back when we first discussed this, you know, of course, I'm all up for a grant program too, but as I spoke before, I'd like to see it used on another road that's eligible for that, instead of a roundabout, because isn't that a county, county road there that's basically the county's responsible for? Just a question.
Yeah, I'll have Brian address, I think there's some split costs in that, but I'll give, have Brian give the exact details.
Yes, good evening, Your Honor, councilmembers again. Yes, you are correct, the, in what is contained within the budgetary impact of the memo is the agreement. So yes, per the jurisdictional areas, the city's responsible, one third of the cost, and the county being two legs equalling two thirds of the cost. So yes.
And our, if I remember right, our third was like 750,000, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I needed.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. So someone like to offer a resolution accepting that improvement, local improvement grant? I will. Thanks, Scott. Thanks, Jim. Roll call, please.
No.
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, tonight, we will look for a resolution granting property owners a temporary exemption from city code 9502, not allowing grass height of, in excess of six inches in height for the month of May during no month, no mo May. And we talked about this at the committee, if anyone has any questions, but I would look for a, look for a resolution to that effect.
I can offer, Your Honor, I got a question.
Yeah, you bet. Thanks, Scott. Someone like to second that? Thank you, Laura. Go ahead, Scott.
Guy, last year, did we have trouble, I mean, not with a few of the people that didn't mow their grass, I mean, it was like in June or towards the end of June, I think you and I had a discussion about, some of the people still hadn't mowed their grass yet. Is that, was that a problem or not? Was that not a problem?
I don't think it was due to no mo May.
Okay, was it just because? Okay. I know it was, it was a question I just wanted to ask, I said I was going to ask you.
Grass really wasn't growing in there last year.
Okay. Okay. That was it.
Other, other questions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution?
Just a question, people have to sign up for that or they just do it? That, that wasn't clear.
Pardon?
Do people need to sign up for this in order to be in the program, or do, or do we not pay attention to that? I don't remember if there was a sign up requirement for this.
I don't believe there's a sign up required for this program.
Okay.
Item number two is a resolution accepting the proposal for a steel fence for public improvement 9767, which is the downtown riverfront improvement project. We talked about this at the committee as well, someone like to offer that?
I will offer that.
Thank you, Jim. Second, Laura. Any questions that we didn't cover? Yes, Al?
I guess the question that I had, I, it's come to a, a decision here. When we talked about this the other day, I know that it had come up that there is not a requirement, either by the state or the city, that has a requirement that there needs to be a fence. Also, two, you know, a split rail fence was talked about, which, you know, that's not going to do much, and it doesn't match with anything, at $20,000. And I'm just using round figures here. And then the metal fence, I believe, was 70,000, is that correct?
It's closed, closed, yeah.
Yeah, right in there. And what I'd like to have seen happen is that, since there's fundraising out there, I think it would have been goodwill for the city to put in 20,000, which would be the least amount for a fence. But yet, I'd like to see the steel fence with fundraising pay for the other 50. I think that would be goodwill for the city. It would be easier on the taxpayer, and people would get their fence if they, you know, I think that would be a great compromise, but I don't think that's what's on the docket here tonight. And that's what I would like, like to have seen. I think a fence is needed. Um, I think a fence is needed. Um, I agree that, you know, kids can fall down that hill and into the water, but there again too, there is no state code or local code that requires that. Thank you.
Thanks, Al. Bill, did you have a?
Um, just a little update. So, on Wednesday morning, um, when I talked to you about where we were with the fundraising, and we were at that time at a gap of 205,000. I am pleased to say since then, we had another donor come up with another 125,000. So, now our gap is only 80. So, that's actually less than the contingency that remains. So, we're able to fully fund that project with that contingency. And I know the fundraising crew is, got some, some other things in the work, people, um, you know, looking at committing. So, I mean, we're down to 80 now for a gap. So, I mean, that is awesome news.
Bill, could you, could you have talked him into another 50?
People have been so generous. It's just amazing. So, um, just a big thank you to everyone that's given. It really, really is something, so.
Your Honor.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you, Bill.
And Bill, how much did they totally come up with? The total, of the total fundraising?
Two million is the goal.
Total goal is two million.
Two million, that's what I thought, okay.
So, we're just 80 shy of that right now, but.
Thank you.
You know, they're not done yet, so there's more to go.
Yeah, I guess I would just echo that. Just say hats off to the people who have done the fundraising, incredible, um, job and they've been working at it a long time. And if there's anything, you know, in hindsight, wish we would have seen that this from the beginning, maybe realized what the contours were going to look like once construction was done. But if there's anything that shouldn't be contingent on fundraising, it's the safety of the kids with the fence. That's the way I see it. So, Jim?
You know, personally, I, I don't care if there's a code that we have to follow or not. I think it's prudent for us to put up that fence. One child going down there, one child getting hurt, one child drowning, it's on us. And I think we need to go with the, with the fence and we pay for it.
Thanks, Jim.
And, and Jim, I would like to make a comment too towards you is that it's not, of course, you know, I don't want to see that happen either. And I'll say it again, I see things like that happen all the time and I don't want to see that happen. So, I understand completely what that is. I'm just trying to, to, uh, look at other avenues to make that happen. So, thank you for your comment. Thanks, Jim.
I think, obviously, I, I brought up on the committee of the hall about, obviously, where we were with the fundraising and I think that was, you know, as much as anything, you know, we, we are kind of accountable and responsible for kind of, like, the city funds and taxpayer money. And so, I think it's only, it's prudent to ask the questions of where we sit. You know, that doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to make a decision, you know, against, you know, the, the safety of people. Um, you know, I, I think from my perspective, I think when we do a project like this in the future, you know, safety should be built into the project and not add-on at the end. And I think that would be, you know, you know, we have a list of kind of alternates on projects and, you know, if there is a safety aspect to that, then it shouldn't be an alternate. Um, it should be included in the base bid. And I think that's something that, you know, going forward, we need to implement that as a policy, you know, and, and not bring it as a kind of a rider a, at the end. You know, because it shouldn't be that it's, whether it's, you know, the city or the, or fundraising, it shouldn't be a question of how it's financed. That should have been part of the package in the first place. And I think, you know, you, we are a generous community and I, you know, we do equally meet those commitments that people pledge to. So, I think, you know, that's a hat off to all, all in the community that do give. Um, but, you know, that doesn't, that shouldn't stop us asking the questions of where are we at? Of how much money do we have and, and are we within the budget parameters? Because that's just being physically responsible as being personally responsible for, for child's safety. Thank you.
Thanks, Anthony. Any other comments, questions? Roll call, please. Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Uh, let's see here. We are under presentation of claims tonight. We have claims in the amount of $1,653,975.37. If anyone has any questions, we'll direct them to our city finance director. Jim?
I'll offer the resolution to pay the bills.
Thank you, Jim. Second, Brent? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Under old business and unfinished business, we have three items this evening. First is looking for a motion directing the city attorney to draft an ordinance regarding franchise fees. And we'll call on our city administrator, Andrew Bremseth, to start that conversation.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, council members. I'm just going to kick us off and then I'll turn it over to John Pana with more engineering. But I just wanted to talk a little bit about process. And, uh, John's going to talk about the recent open house that was held on March 21st and some of the results related to the survey that was put out in the community, uh, starting that night and then beyond. But I just wanted to talk, like I said, about process. And really, the next step in the process, one way or the other, is this motion directing the city attorney to draft these ordinances. That is the action before you this evening. If you wish to, quote unquote, kill the franchise fee conversation, vote that motion down. If you wish to proceed with entertaining franchise fees, uh, vote affirmatively to that motion. The city attorney will draft those ordinances if that's the will of the council. And then, as I mentioned in the memo, um, to approve an ordinance, there's two readings, which I expect would happen on May 6th and on May 20th. If approved, we anticipate about 90 days before implementation or collection of fees after the effective date of the ordinance. So, it's not something that's going to happen immediately. There is some coordination that has to take place with utility companies and with the Public Utilities Commission and some timelines related to those activities as well. And then, just real quickly, I wanted to remind everybody what the proposal is. That is 5% franchise fee on gas and electric bills for everybody in city limits. It is anticipated that the franchise fee would collect around $1.3 million annually and the revenue from that franchise fee would be dedicated to street funding. So, again, I'm going to call on John with more engineering and then the question before the council is related to whether or not they want to move the process forward and have the city attorney draft those ordinances.
All right, thank you, uh, mayor, council. First, just want to say, uh, thank you for having more engineering help the city with this process. It's been a very interesting process, um, working with staff, just getting a better understanding of how the city funds street projects and what all it entails. So, thank you again. Little bit on the process, like, um, administrator was mentioning, um, we worked with the city over the last three, four months, uh, taking a look at various things, um, looking at old capital improvement plans along with a new capital improvement plan, which ultimately looks at doing more street work, okay? With that, we also looked at existing water, sanitary sewer and storm sewer rates, along with existing records related to debt service and what debt service the city currently has on the books. And also, what the projected debt service would be with this fast-scale capital improvement plan, doing more street work, okay? During the process, um, it started talking about street projects, right? But it quickly, in discussions, we realized that a lot of these streets also have water, sanitary sewer and storm sewer needs underneath them. So, when you do a lot of these projects that we're proposing, you also have to take a look at how it's going to impact those rates and the user rates for people in the city. So, um, with that, you know, we went through that and, uh, my colleague Tyson presented this to you guys in February. So, we took a look at a lot of the things in this process related to that. With that, you guys moved forward, asked us to go out, engage the public with, uh, open house. And as part of that open house, we also had a online survey available for residents where they could provide feedback related to franchise fees and answer four specific questions, so. So, on March, Thursday, March 21st, uh, we had a open house held here at city hall. Uh, there were four members of, with more engineering here to answer questions, um, along with city staff and multiple council members were also in attendance that night. One interesting thing from that evening, um, I believe we had about 10 people from the public attend. So, very low turnout in my opinion, okay? With that, uh, you know, that evening, like I said, they had an opportunity to speak with members of our team and then city staff and council were all, were also here to observe but also have discussions with the people that were here. We gave, uh, people that attended that night a flyer, which summarized the results of our study, you could call it. It had on some key, key items, just to educate the public. It talked about franchise fees, what they're going to be used for, like Andrew mentioned. It's for, dedicated for street projects. Why they're important, you know? It talked about the effects and impacts to the utility rates, which we need to tell the residents if we move forward. What is this going to do, right? Along, on top of the 5% franchise fee. So, we gave them that information. And then, it also had, uh, information related to the impact to property taxes if we didn't move forward with, um, franchise fees, but still went forward with the fast-track, uh, capital improvement plan. So, I think we did a good job of providing the information necessary for people to see that wanted to see it, okay? As far as the findings, Andrew mentioned them for the most part, but three, three key takeaways, like I said. Franchise fees at a 5% rate have the potential to generate approximately $1.3 million for street projects, okay? That 5% franchise fee, um, equates to a monthly in, increase in gas and electric would be $12.50 a month for a user who currently has a combined monthly gas and electric bill of $250. So, we gave them those scenarios. So, it's really, it's 5% of your bill. So, you can do the math, but just to make it easy for people to see, they could walk in, look at that chart, kind of go, okay, that's where I sit. There's my impact with franchise fees. And then, one other key point, um, we talked about it in February, and, and Bill had mentioned this. The city increases their utility rates every year to keep up with increased costs and increased needs. So, utility rates are not only going up related to water, sanitary sewer and storm sewer just because of the conversation about franchise fees. They go up annually irregardless, okay? With that being said, we also showed examples of without franchise fees, how much the rates were potentially going to go up to meet the needs and then also with the fast-tracked capital improvement plan. With the fast-tracked capital improvement plan, uh, typical user that uses 6,000 gallons of water per month, okay, so it's quite a bit of water, but a larger residential unit, would see a total impact above and beyond a typical rate increase of $3.18 percent, or $3.18 per month, okay? Also, I believe it was in February, wasn't it? Uh, the city did move forward with a rate increase already to reflect that additional 3.18 on top of its normal rate, so, okay? Finally, uh, kind of results from the survey part, um, 34 people responded to the online survey. Once again, in, at least in my opinion, that's a very low number of respondents, okay? So, um, of the 34 respondents, 19 responded that the roads in Fergus Falls were in poor enough shape to warrant investment beyond the city's annual budget. Okay, so the first question was that. Um, second question, 11 people indicated they would rather pay property taxes to fund additional street improvements versus 10 that indicated they would rather pay franchise fees. So, it was really a question just, if you answered yes to the first one, would you rather go this route or this route? And a few more people that clearly answered no still answered that question. That's fine, so. But it's about 50/50. Last two questions, um, 25 people feel franchise fees are not a fair and sustainable source for funding for street improvements versus eight that felt it was a fair and sustainable source, okay? Out of the 34 people that responded. And finally, uh, 28 people feel franchise fees would impact businesses and residents negatively versus six that felt franchise fees would impact businesses and residents positively, okay? So, I'm just here to share the results. There were also places to provide comments. I'm not going to go into those, but those are absolutely yours to see at some point. The city have copies of those. The general theme behind a lot of those comments, uh, were, were, you know, they don't like taxes, they don't like more fees, um, for the ones that mentioned that. And, um, going back into past projects and their belief in how they wish that would have been spent on streets versus other things. So, I mean, that was kind of a general theme across all four questions. There were some that, um, ultimately spoke in favor, but as you could see from the final results on the last two questions, there were a few of those. So, yeah, that's, that's the general theme behind the, the comments in there. Okay?
Thanks, John. Anything else? So, we are looking for a.
Do we have a question?
Oh, yeah.
Sure. Um, did that include, you're the number, like, the rate increases, let's say for Otter Tail Power or Great Plains? Did that increase include their franchise tax, what they get charged to? Do you know? Because they have to pay a franchise tax too and any company is not going to eat that. They're going to pass that along to the consumer. Do you know, was that included in that?
Well, these guys can speak more on this, but the city charges the rate to them and.
Right.
Ultimately, the city collects it back through.
Well, I, I guess what I'm getting at is if the, like, if, if the, if Otter Tail Power gets charged $50,000, let's just use that for a round figure for whatever, is that put into, you know, usually a company's not going to eat that. They're going to pass that along to the consumer so they can still be profitable. So, is that their rate increase, including that? Because the consumer's going to have to pay their franchise fee.
That's our assumption is that it'd be a direct pass-through. That's the 5% we presented, you know?
And then the other question too, and I don't know what the numbers would be on this, like, if somebody's getting heat assistance or something like that, how does that work for a franchise fee?
I don't know why heat assist, it's just on the bill. So, I think if you're getting heat assistance from somewhere else, that's separate from that, so.
Yeah, but do you, would they still get a franchise fee, do you think, Bill?
Oh, I would think so. I think that franchise fee goes on all the bills, so.
Okay.
If you're getting heat assistance from a separate entity, that goes to pay that bill, two separate transactions, I would think.
Does the taxpayer pay that then too? If it's a government program, I'm assuming?
I suppose if you, if they got more assistance then.
Okay.
From that program.
Those are just a couple of questions that I had that is out there.
So, we'll, uh, thanks, Al. Let's go ahead and get a motion on the floor and then we can have discussion.
I'll offer, Your Honor.
We get a motion directing the city attorney to direct those documents. Thank you, Scott. Second, Brent? Great, okay. Counsel? Questions for John? Questions for staff? Comments before we open it up to the public? Before we call for the vote? Thanks, John. I, I'm assuming there's some people who want to talk to us? If you do, please. We'll keep our comments, um, brief. Let's not be repetitive.
We'll keep them to three minutes, and then we'll also, yeah, ask that, yeah, just anyone wishing to speak, just state your name for the record.
Good evening. Again, Lisa Workman, President of the Fergus Falls Area Chamber of Commerce. We too did a survey and we shared those results with city staff and council members. But just to reiterate what we talked about earlier, being the small business, being the backbone of our community, our small businesses are struggling. They're being impacted and hit left and right with increasing costs from employment mandates to rising wages, rising cost of insurance, transportation, increases from property taxes. They have volatile prices of the products that they're ordering in or supplies. They're really overwhelmed in general with the overall economic uncertainty. And I just urge you to carefully consider adding another fee that you have a choice to not add or to add. We have been talking to our members, again, outside of the survey, and they are far more concerned about the rising cost of business and being in business in the Fergus Falls area versus the condition of our roads. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Brendan Jansen, Pioneer Road here in Fergus Falls. I'd like to express a little bit of concern about some of this. I was not aware there was any surveys to fill out. Clearly, there's a lack of engagement in the community for stuff like this, and I would like to see the city maybe take some action on that and maybe get more people involved with stuff like this. I'm concerned hearing that water bills may increase $36 a year for the average consumer, as I do remember reading that the average electric bill would be increased by about $90 per year on top of that. And I've had discussions with my neighbor in the apartment we live in. She struggles to pay $10 differences each month because she's on social security. So seeing these impacts, you know, $120 every year doesn't seem like that much to people working. There's a lot of people in this community that would be hurt by that. So I'd just like to point that out.
Mark Leighton. We reviewed a budget earlier from a family that has $48,000 worth of income. Al brings up a good point. Those fees are going to have to be added somewhere. Look at the profitability of our local nursing homes today. They're struggling to stay open. We have hospitals, same thing. We have bread companies. We've got large automotive dealerships. We have light manufacturing here. What is that going to do to them? And I appreciate the chamber's comments. But if you're to take that budget I sent you a couple of days ago at $48,000, and let's go back down to the earlier presentation today with the mean income and how the rentals are going to be set up on the new proposed project at Staten. If someone has an income of $25,000, how are they going to pay their, how are they going to pay their bills? The last time this thing came up, it was loudly presented. It's not the right time. And I again believe that it is not the right time on economic uncertainties, a pipeline of products that can't get on a timely fashion, shortage of workers. I'm just dumbfounded that this council just continues to spend money and raise taxes and not listen to the people. I'm speechless. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leighton. Others?
I'm Mary Jo Iglesias, 920 North Ada, Fergus Falls. And this is the first I've heard of the meeting that you had and anything about it at all. I mean, it was like, kind of like a slap in the face. And I think if there had been more publicizing about it and such, you would have had more than $34,000 there and such. Do you have any more of those forms that someone could just look at that? I mean, I know it's passed the time, but, okay.
Speak into the microphone, please, not, not...
Where could you pick one up?
Could you speak into the microphone, please?
Where could you?
You're talking to him, not to us.
Where could you pick one up? Where could you pick up one?
On the website, right, Jean, you said?
Yeah.
On the city website.
Okay. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary Jo. Any others? Okay. We'll bring it back to the council. There's a motion to have the city attorney draft ordinances, or I'm sorry, the documents for the franchise regarding franchise fees. And then just for the public, once those documents, if they were to be drafted, then they would come back for a first reading and a second reading, at which time point they would become part of the city charter or part of the city code, I'm sorry. So anyway, but that for tonight, we're just voting on having the city attorney draft those ordinances. There's a motion to that effect. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
Two, Jim and the motion carries. So at this point, the ordinance will be drafted by our city attorney. It'll come back for a first reading, I assume, in two weeks, correct?
I think it's three.
Three weeks, at our next, at our next meeting. Okay. At our next meeting. Question?
The cost of the franchise fee documents going to be?
The cost of the drafting of the documents?
You're getting the, I think the horse in front of the cart going downhill, and the cart is going to take over.
This is the process that we take. We ask our city attorney to draft ordinance. It goes through a process where people, there's a process the public can comment on it and the council could consider it. So we, that's the same thing we always do. We draft ordinances, we have a first reading, then we have a second reading before they become law.
There's no additional cost for that.
There's no additional cost. This is the process that we use for any ordinance that becomes law. It's stated out, it's stated in our, in our bylaws, in our charter. So with that, we'll move along.
I have a question.
Yes.
When we have the first reading, is there...
Did you want to come to the microphone?
Are you speaking at that?
So the question, I believe, is at the first reading, will there be an opportunity for public comment? On a subject like this, I believe that yes, we will welcome public comment at the public. We typically don't, we typically have a first reading. It's just someone introduces that ordinance. But I think that this garnered enough attention that we certainly can have public comment at the first reading, which would be at our next regularly scheduled council meeting. You're welcome. Moving along, item number two is a follow-up to the charter commission discussion regarding the question posed regarding vacancies office. And Andrew, did you want to take that?
Sure, I will, Your Honor. Council members, at the last meeting, there was a question about what the process was related to following up to the open forum participant who asked about this particular topic. At that time, I shared that the charter commission would be taking the topic up at their April 9th meeting, which was last Tuesday. And I have a statement from the charter commission written by Mark Hovland, who's the chair of the commission, that I asked him to prepare just so we could read this and put the issue to rest. So I'll just do that real quickly here. The charter commission was asked to review the charter and to give an opinion on whether there may have been a violation of Charter Section 2.04 during a meeting of the city council on March 4th, 2024. On that date, Councilmember Al Kremeyer left his seat on the Council dais and spoke from the podium on the chamber floor during the open forum segment of the city council meeting. An assertion was made that such an action constituted a vacancy on the city council per Charter Section 2.04. The consensus of the members present at the charter commission meeting on April 9th, 2024, was that Councilmember Kremeyer's actions did not meet the requirements for vacancy on the council per the city charter. Signed, Mark Hovland, Charter Commission Chair.
Thank you, Andrew. We'll move along unless anyone has any comments. Next item is, there was a motion at the committee of the whole regarding the open forum policy to reconsider the provision that the open forum would not be televised. And so we brought that back for discussion tonight, but the motion from the, I'd like, yeah, we're going to get to discussion, but we have a motion from the committee that was to televise the portion of the open forum. Is that accurate, Jim? And Scott, that was your second?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Al.
I guess what I wanted to add to that motion, I know it's, if it was out there on Wednesday, but I'd like to make it tonight. I think that it should be videoed for all to see. I also feel it should be part of the meeting. As we saw here tonight at 5:15, there were council members still getting their things together. One walked in 30 seconds before 5:15, and they weren't prepared to hear anybody. And I don't think anybody wanted to speak. I also think as far as goodwill and good faith, because everyone who spoke that night or that day about the open forum wanted to keep it the way it was. And the council voted against those people who spoke, and that was the only ones who spoke, were speaking for it. There was no other person who spoke in favor of that. I feel that out of good faith and basically an apology to the citizens, it should be during that meeting at 5:30 when the meeting starts, and I'd like to see the open forum right before the approval of the agenda. So if there is something that came up, and I forget which council member said that, if something comes up, then maybe it could be added to the agenda, and it could be taken care of it simply that evening. I also think that a person should be given five minutes and not three. And I think that would be acting in good faith and in good favor to our citizens of Fergus Falls. So that's what I'd like to see, is a five-minute time limit with the meeting being into the, with the open forum being in the meeting, and it be videoed for all to see. I am a proponent of freedom to speak. And that's what I talked about on March 4th, was freedom of speech and nothing else. It had to do with what people needed to be able to speak about. And I'm very passionate about that freedom that we do have, and I want to keep that freedom for everyone. So that's what I wanted to see, was go back to what it was, except add two more minutes to the speaker. And I think if we can't give somebody five minutes to speak, our lives are way too busy. I think that's how we should be able to listen to people and have a dialogue after the meeting. And I know that there's no communication with the open forum customarily to the speaker, and that can remain the same or it can be changed too. But I think I would really like to see it stay within the confines of the meeting prior to the agenda approval, and add two more minutes, and it be videoed. Thank you.
Thanks, Al. Any other comments? Anthony?
I mean, I would agree with Councilmember Kramer that I think it should be part, I didn't see anything wrong with what we had, and, you know, it was part of the meeting before. And I think, you know, doing it at 5:15, you know, there's a number of people that can't get here for 5:15. And, you know, I think, you know, we all become creatures of habit, and I know like for myself, it's like, I come for 5:30, and I would, I too would prefer to see it, you know, at 5:30 and be back, basically be back as it was. I think we changed something, you know, we fixed something that wasn't broken. And, you know, a lot of, a lot of people have reached out, you know, with a negative sentiment about the fact that we, you know, did what we did by taking it out, out of the, you know, just basically shifting it from 5:30 to 5:15. So, you know, I can't vote for this. And I'm not also sure that, can we really carry over motions from Wednesday to Monday? I mean, is that, isn't when the meeting ends, doesn't the meeting end?
It was a recommendation.
It was a recommendation, right? Okay. So, because I was going to say, I think if you make a motion, I wouldn't have said it, it's not open forever.
The motion was made by Councilmember Fish, seconded by Scott, to recommend to this council on the night of consideration to video. So could I comment on that? Because I think, I thought a lot about this, and actually, I think part of the problem that I had myself after the last time we discussed this was that we didn't compromise, right? That I think that there was, I'll just speak for myself personally, there was a couple of people that I was frustrated with the way that I felt that they were misusing the open forum. And so I supported, I supported taking that off video, which anyone who knows me, and I think that those who've served would know that that's not something I've supported for the last six years. In fact, I've spoke exactly the opposite. I wanted it to be as open and as transparent as possible. And so I would like to thank the people who spoke, because quite honestly, there was some people who said some things I thought were very reasonable. And, and I, anyway, I'm just speaking for myself. I'm not trying to go on a rant, but I'll say, I think what we didn't do was a very good job of compromising, and I'll take that myself, myself included. But anyway, one way we could, I think, I think there was some desire to have it outside the meeting for some reasons. We can always change this policy. We also have the invocation and the pledge of allegiance are outside, the invocation is the one that's outside of the technical meeting. No one would know that necessarily is outside the meeting, other than the purposes of it's not in the, it's not in the same minutes. There's no reason we couldn't have the open forum at 5:30 on camera, proceed with the invocation, proceed with the, we could still get it on the, so I think, I guess my point is there's room to compromise here to achieve the goals of people. And maybe we need as a council to, and myself included, to do a better job of that. Al?
Just a question, Mayor. Is, so what you're kind of saying is that have the open forum, or have the meeting start at 5:30, or have the invocation and the pledge and start at 5:30, and then have open forum and then open up the meeting, is what you're saying?
Officially call the meeting to order. So I mean, I guess what it would do is it would technically be outside the meeting, but it would still be at 5:30 for the public to be there. It would still be on camera, and it would still be in order for us to start a meeting and address anything at the, that would be the goal.
Okay. The other, I guess one other comment that I'd like to also make, and I don't know which council member said it, I do not remember that, and I didn't take a note, kind of like back in high school, didn't take a whole lot of notes, so I missed that one. But what I would like to, there was a comment made about legitimacy, if it's in the meeting or if it's not in the meeting. Well, what people say is very legitimate. It needs to be on record. It needs to be, of course, videoed, I feel. It needs to be inside the confines of a meeting, because that word, not legitimate, really bothered me, because that's offensive to somebody speaking. If they take the time and they get the nerve up to come and talk to people, I don't want them to feel that they're not legitimate. You know, and I can't remember who said that, but I do know those words came out. And I think that, you know, I, we should apologize for that. I mean, everybody's word is special, and it needs to be heard, and that's what your feelings are. And it needs to be, that's important to a citizen, and we need to hear it, if we agree with it or we don't agree with it. Thanks, Al.
So at this point, we, yeah, Jim.
What you're saying, excuse me, is that we will do the open forum before we approve the agenda. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Before we do a roll call.
And that way, we can add to the agenda if somebody brings something up that we feel should be added to the agenda that night.
Yeah, there's a couple of ways to do that. You could do that at 5:30 before you call official meeting to order, or you could do it right after you call the official meeting to order. You know, we do the invocation right before.
Yep.
I mean, it's at 5:30. I mean, everyone's here for a city council meeting.
But we do it before we approve the agenda so that we could add to the agenda. Right. I would be fine with that.
So Alexandria got brought up last time we had discussed this, well, our last council meeting. And so if you look at their agenda, they do their roll call, you know, they have their prayer, the pledge of allegiance, their roll call, and then they do the open forum before they approve their agenda for the day. So, I mean, that's what I would like to see, is that we kind of bring it back to not exactly how we had it before, but that gives us the opportunity to take action if needed.
And just to clarify too, thanks for bringing up Alexandria. I was, if I was Ms. Leah, when I spoke to the mayor, I clarified that, and Alexandria does have the open forum. They took it away in 2021, but they have brought it back since. So just, if I was Ms. Leah on that, that's bad on me. So it sounds like you made a, you amended your motion.
I will make a new motion, that we have the open forum televised, starting at 5:30, before we approve the agenda, so that we can add any items that we wish to the agenda.
Okay. I guess, do we call the meeting to order before we do that, or do we do that, call the meeting to order right after the open forum? That's the question, and I, I guess, I don't know that it really matters, to tell you the truth.
If it doesn't matter, I think we should have it in the meeting.
Sure. These guys have the motion, and we'll let them, if they want to change it, and then we'll vote on it, up or down?
I think we should call the meeting to order.
Okay. So, so we've got an amended motion, are you going to second that amended motion?
My preference would that it would not be a part of the business meeting, so I'll let somebody else second it.
I will second that.
Okay. So the, yeah, yeah.
Just in response to Councilmember Kwame, the citizens is our business, I feel, citizens is our business. That, I don't think we can sit on a high horse and say, "This is a business meeting, you can't speak during our meeting." This is their house. All right. Thank you.
We have a...
Are we going to get a chance to talk, or?
You know, I'm going to open up briefly, because we've had, we've, we've talked about this item a lot, I think we have a consensus here to go back. So, we're going to open up the floor, if you have a few quick comments, you're welcome to them now.
Kristi Hansen, 3201 East Fair Avenue. This is my first council meeting, I've never been here before. I think freedom of speech, I think you should welcome it, and be unique that way, because everybody else is shutting it down. I appreciate your comments, I think that everybody that's here wants to talk to you, and I think that because their time gets squashed, and this isn't familiar to them, when they do come in, they might seem abrasive to you, but they really just want to talk to you. What you talked about with the 5%, 5%, as somebody who's paid, you know, sits on that borderline, if somebody doesn't pay for their 5%, somebody else pays 10%. This is the first I heard about that, and yes, I, like I said, I don't come to this stuff, but I appreciate the conversation that he's opting for, and I think, if I understand right, you probably got some verbal attacks somewhere along the past, and I think if it was left open, and people were invited in, because that's really what you want to hear, then I don't think it gets blown up in the first place. So, I would love it if you guys would just embrace, embrace the freedom of speech and be ahead of everybody else.
Thank you, Kristi.
Al Frank, Fergus Falls, you all know how I feel. Mr. Mayor, that conversation out on Central Lakes Trail and your actions tonight, I appreciate that. I agree with having the public forum at the council meeting televised with Jim's motion or resolution, and Al, thank you. So I hope it passes.
Thanks, Al.
I think it's very, very important.
Bob Noah, Fergus Falls, I'm going to ask you to give me a little more time, Mayor, because I came prepared with a few notes, I usually don't.
Sure.
You know, this has to do with the First Amendment. At the April 1st meeting, I didn't hold back from any of you, I told you exactly what I thought, because I felt my, our First Amendment rights are being trampled on, and that's the way that the whole vote went. You had introduced the, the, the whole idea of it, and, so the whole process has been a terrible revelation of the attitude of the city. On your radio program last Friday, you made references to exact quotes that I had made. You didn't use my name, that's fine, I'm in the light of day, I don't mind people knowing what I believe and the truth of it, but you came off with some, well, let me preface it by saying, I like the direction it's going right now, okay? You know, I talked about corruption and nepotism, you brought those up at the radio program. You characterized us, me, as angry, and used the word "dangerous," and that's, that's quite a characterization. It's not the first time you used it, when people collide with your, your stand, Mayor, there's been two other people, you use that term "dangerous," I'm not a dangerous fellow, my views are probably going to, I don't think I've been rude to anybody. And you mentioned personal attacks, I've never personally attacked anybody on this council, or you, Mayor. Just because I disagree vehemently, doesn't mean I hate anybody, or I'm attacking anybody, but it's got to be brought out, brought out, because it has to do with our, our rights. When you knock down the town hall meetings, that sent a message to the public, saying, "This is our meeting, this is our chamber," et cetera, et cetera, and that message has carried for a year and a half now, whatever it's been. So, here's my compromise. At least bring back the conversation about having town halls here, that got shot to ribbons for no reason. This is us, the public, the people, you got to respect that. We were disrespected, and this council needs a dose of humility, you can get that from God. Accountability comes from us, the public, we tell you what we think. So the compromise, bring that, that conversation back, and also, there's a legal method for the city, it's easier than for the public to do, very much easier, to amend the charter to reflect what you're talking about now, so that our, that our voices will always be heard, not having a whim of some changes, whatever the council makeup is. So thanks for listening.
Thanks, Bob.
Mary Jo Iglesias, City of Fergus Falls, I used to be working at the library, I'm also on the charter commission, and the other thing that we talked about, besides the three-to-five-minute option, was why is it, why is there the limit of twice a year to talk about a subject? Because subjects come up again, and then later on, they'll come up again, and such, and it's, you know, I don't think they should be limited to just, you know, two times a year to speak.
Hello again, Debbie Smith, Fergus Falls, Minnesota. The beauty of open communication, and when people from the community get to view it, whether it's on Peg Access, or they're here, you just mentioned about a survey online, and I thought, well, were we supposed to magically know about this survey online? A lot of people aren't aware of that, we can use every form of communication possible, including right here, to let people know when there's a survey, if it's online, this is a, a community that has a lot of elderly people, and people who don't even have computers, and maybe, maybe they don't go to the library, maybe they, they're uncomfortable, where can they pick up the physical surveys? Things like this can be announced here, and use every media possible to encourage engagement, even in, in surveys. Thirty-four surveys in a city this size is a, is not a good representation at all. So, let's just figure out how to engage the public, and allowing this to be viewed is, is a good way. It also brings down the temperature of the people who are angry, and you'll find better communication back and forth. Thank you.
He's bigger than you are.
Mayor, council, I've been up this podium many times, and I very much applaud each and every one of you, especially Andrew and Ben. I know that the Glacier Edge Trail, I mean, it's an ongoing issue, we're talking to the railroad, Otter Tail Valley Railroad, and it's ongoing. When we had the open townhouse meetings, and the speakers from Greater Bemidji, and then we had Kenny Nelson from Perm, it was just inspiring to hear them say, "It's the businesses that made it happen." It wasn't the councils, because they were head, they were butt-hits against the council, so there's different agenda. How do we engage those local businesses to invest? When we hear the gentleman from Vector, you know, yes, it's going to really help them, well, they're owned by a holding company, they're looking for money, okay? We need those businessmen that are for the people, okay? How do you grow the community? How do you invest in the community? And we see that in Perm. When Kenny Nelson, and he goes, this is, you know, it wasn't all roses for him, if you've ever heard a story, it was a challenge, but he kept on fighting, and he gathered the people around him, and inspired them to build the housing, to invest in their housing, to invest in their community. I mean, you can only do so much, how do we get the area businesses to be on board? I thank you, I applaud each and every one of you. I want the dairy plant having something there, you know, just got to throw that in there, because it's beautiful prime land, and we see that they, 801 Stanton, you know, they're going to want to grow, but I'm just like, we got to get investor for that dairy land, that's just absolutely prime, I mean, that's a riverfront. Thank you.
Thanks, Dwayne. And I just, just tell you, just off the tangent a little bit, but any developer we've had, look at the dairy property, they want to know what's going on with the 801. So, if we get 801, I think that's the biggest thing we can do to get that dairy property done. That's my personal opinion, sorry, back to you.
Mark Leighton, next time I'll bring my platform, so I can stand a little taller than him. Let me go back, if I may, on TIF. If the city approves TIF for the next project, I would suggest that each council and the mayor give up their next three months of stipend to help fund that, or the council members give up three months of their stipend and help build the fence. I appreciate the safety of a fence, what if the kids are on the outside of the fence? The open forum, thank you for your attention to this, there's a couple items that I'd like to follow up on, so when you do draft your, your policy, it's mandated, as Mr. Hicks has said, that you get back to the public. And number two, I believe I asked, how many times can I talk about the budget, if there's 50, 60 departments that needs to be addressed? And allow me, Mr. Sher, I really appreciate the opportunity to find out why you changed your mind, there's a lot of backwatering going on tonight. The outcome is going to be for the benefit of the citizens. I, I guess I want to express my appreciation to Fish and Kwame, based on some pressure from someone, and some people, that this is being readdressed. I congratulate the council on that. You've now heard it once, keep up the good work.
Thanks, Mr. Leighton. I think, anyone else?
Hello, Pam Ballard, Fergus Falls, just along with, you know, getting people notice of things, the city bill inserts, because everybody gets a city bill, would maybe be a good way to communicate changes or things that are coming up, and not just one time, but, you know, ahead of time, so there's a few of them that come out. And then, I also have a concern with, you know, the splash pad that's going in, with the limited parking downtown, and that splash pad taking away parking from the senior center, you know, is there going to be, you know, these people that go use the senior center already have a hard enough time probably walking, a lot of them, and if there's not going to be parking available, where are they going to be able, you know, because once the water, that splash pad opens, there's going to be, it's going to get filled up with people going to that with their, their kids and everything, and then, if people want to go to the senior center, they're probably going to have difficulty even getting there. So anyway, that's just a concern of mine, I don't know if that was ever even considered when...
Yeah, I just, I mean, just for what it's worth, I think our first, one of our first public meetings took place at the senior center, where, I think it was 2017, and you might have to check my, I believe it was 2017, when we proposed this project, we went to them, we held a, actually, I think we held a listening session with all the council members there, and we've engaged them in communication since 2017, knowing that anything done to that parking lot would affect the parking, so...
They don't feel that it's going to be an issue?
We've worked, I, I can't speak for them, but I will say that we have engaged them repeatedly and allowed them...
It was a full house, and they were, let's just say, agitated, so they, they knew about it, and they were...
They were what, agitated?
Agitated a little bit, that was a very good, good conversation.
But since then, we did, we've had countless meetings with them to address some of the issues, and, so, I, I can't say it's perfect from their standpoint, but I can definitely say that the city has reached out a number of times to them individually, and as a, as an organization.
It's just, you know, kind of concerning, and then, I also want to thank you for revisiting the open forum, being televised, that's a good idea, thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
Mark Hermes, Fergus Falls, I'd like to just touch on something in regards to an issue from the March, March 4th council meeting, where Councilman Kramer stated, "Let the record show that I am temporarily stepping down from my third ward council seat to address the open forum as a citizen. I will return to my seat, my council seat, after my comments." It seems that somehow the word "resign my position" was incorrectly substituted. There was a person, a certain citizen, that had called for his position to be vacated until the next election. My concern is, how is he supposed to address the council and people as a citizen, if that is the consequences? And that goes for any, I think, any of you council people. If you have something that you want to speak about as a, as a citizen, how you do it? Thanks.
Thanks, Mark. I'd just like to make a comment, what I said on March 4th council meeting, I made a comment, "When communication stops, bad things happen." That's a great quote, and here tonight is a perfect example of communication working. I really am proud of everybody here, on this council, city staff, very proud, that we can actually come together, have dialogue with the citizens of Fergus Falls, who this is their is their city, and we can come to a conclusion. That's what government should be. So, thank you all, and you know what, everybody needs a hand, I really, I really believe that. Thank you, you guys, thank you.
Thanks, Al. All right, so, we have a motion to bring the open forum, or we'll make it a resolution, and seconded by Laura, and that is to bring the, it, it, prior to the, prior to the approval of agendas of the meeting, so, at the very beginning of the meeting, after the meeting's called, or prior to the approval of the agenda, and to have it obviously be televised, so...
I, I hate to be a stick in the mud, but was there any, going to be any discussion on five minutes instead of three minutes?
This is the resolution today, I, we can amend this thing at any time.
Very good.
So, let's take baby steps. No, I know, we've had it like this for years, so we can...
Baby steps.
Baby steps. There's enough compromising for tonight.
I just thought we would get, you know, make the big leap here, you guys.
Just kidding. Roll call.
Green Meyer.
Yes.
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 No.
A resolution is approved. There is no other business to come before the council this evening, just another reminder, April 24th, 7:00 AM, we'll continue the public hearing for the property located 801, the tax increment financing located 801 West Stanton Avenue. With that, we're adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor.
I got the call.
You want the 5%?
Thank you.
Thank you.